My name is Harmony Kidos. I am the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. Nice to see so many of you again. As a reminder, the TSCC is a community oversight commission established by the Oregon Legislature more than 100 years ago. The TSCC, the commission oversees the budgets of all TSCC member taxing districts and annually conducts a thorough budget review and certification process. Additionally, this TSCC holds public budget hearings like this one to engage with district leadership and provide additional opportunity for public comment before the budget is adopted. I'll now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves and state if they have any business relationships that could be perceived as conflict of interest.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Burton. This is my first year as a TSCC Commissioner. I have no business with the Prosper Portland, although I am an alumni of the organization. I worked here in the early 2000s, right next to the ageless Tony Barnes. So I'm very glad to be back.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Allison Lugo-Napp. This is also my first year on the TSCC, and I have no conflicts with Prosper Portland. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Matt Donahue, third year on the commission. My day job is as a financial advisor or investment banker to state and local governments, and I have no business relationships with Prosper.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is my eighth and final year with the TSCC. Did I hear you say something about final over there? You're with me? Okay. Well, I'm now retired two years, and when I was working, I was a senior policy analyst in the President's Office of Portland State. And this is actually my last budget certification hearing after many, many, many. And so I'm looking forward to it, and I have no conflicts of interest with Prosper Portland.
Allegra Willhite, Executive Director with TSCC.
Tony Bechart, Staff, TSCC.
Again, I'm Harmony Kidos. This is my sixth year with TSCC. My third is Chair. In my, when I am not TSCC-ing, I work in K-12 curriculum and assessment, and I have no business relationships with Prosper Portland. Chair Cruz, will you please introduce yourselves and have the rest of your folks introduce themselves?
Thank you very much, and welcome to all of you. We're just happy to have you here. We're happy to meet up with new folks and new work, and that's what we do. So I'm Tavo Cruz, I'm the Board Chair of Prosper Portland. I'm here. He's not going to send it. I don't know why. He's going to miss out on all the fun.
Hi, Marcelino Alvarez. This is my first year on the commission. Thank you.
Serena Stademar Wesley, and I'm not sure what year I'm in, but I'm here.
Willie Myers, this is my ninth and final year and final meeting for Prosper Portland. And yeah, Tavo and I joined at the same time. I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission and, you know, love seeing the familiar faces and the new faces coming onboard here, so.
Good afternoon. I'm Shabri Vickers. I am sitting in for Executive Director Kimberly Branham today. Thank you.
We'll start with any introductory remarks you all might have, after which we'll hear public comment, and then we'll dive into our discussion. So I'll hand it over to Chair Cruz or Ms. Vickers, whoever has some comments to start with.
Well, no, no real prepared comments with respect to today's hearing, other than to just welcome you. And as with our protocol in the past, we have cheated and prepared some responses to your questions. So we're ready for you, we hope. And so if you'd like to go ahead and proceed, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'll now call on any members of the public who would like to speak. Each person is limited to three minutes of time, and we'll let them know when they're nearing the end of their time. Allegra, do we have anyone signed up?
We had no advanced public comment. I would like to just take a moment and say if anyone is here in the room and has walked in but did not sign up, that you, of course, are welcome to at this time indicate.
Not seeing anything. Should anyone join us, we'll try and provide space towards the end of the meeting. We appreciate the large audience for our hearings, for today's hearing. So with that, we'll dive into our questions, and Mark, you get the first one.
Okay. Well, we appreciate preparations, so. So this question is for the board members, and there are many of you here. Thank you for being here. Is there an example of a project that you feel has been especially successful and demonstrates the vision of inclusive economic growth? And what specific benefits did that project bring or will soon bring?
Thank you. That's a great question, and provides us an opportunity to cover a few projects, actually, that we're proud of and feel like we'd like to tell you about. And then what I'll do is I'll go through the material, and then if any of the commissioners would like to add anything or emphasize something, please jump in. So to start off with, the Broadway Quarter. As of January 2024, Prosper Portland successfully completed demolition of the U.S. Postal Service's vehicle maintenance facility, relocation of the post office's retail operations, site work and soils remediation, and has recently finished demolition of the postal service's main processing and distribution facility. All four of these construction projects exceed performance goals laid out in the Community Benefit Agreement negotiated with the Healthy Communities Coalition and implemented upon, in partnership with the project's Labor Management Community Oversight Committee. Key outcomes have included 93% of costs were spent at COVID-certified firms. That's the Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity of the State. You're probably familiar with that. Nearly, nearly 36,000, excuse me, 36,000 was spent, I believe, actually it says 36M, should be 36 million, was spent at minority-owned firms. 24% of hours were worked by apprentices, 70% of hours were worked by minority workers, and 20% of hours were worked by women workers. In addition, Prosper is partnering, partnering with the Portland Housing Bureau in their process to secure an affordable housing developer on their property, Block Four, which will happen this summer with development to follow. We're continuing to work with the city's infrastructure bureaus to complete design and begin construction of Northwest Johnson and Kearney Streets and utility infrastructure later this year, and we're collaborating with parks to start conceptual design of the North Park Block's continuation through the site, starting with a block adjacent to the Portland College of Arts. Also, we have an exclusive negotiating agreement with related companies, together with Melvin Mark, for private mixed-use development of the property, and have submitted an application on behalf of the broad, excuse me, of a broad partnership, including Related, PGE, Constructing Hope, and Oregon Tradeswomen. Also, excuse me, to PCEF for funding to support a net-zero Phase One middle-income housing development on Block Six. So that's quite a mouthful, as you could tell. But that's, but that's the post office. Then we have the Williams and Russell Project. The Williams and Russell CDC and their development team continue to move forward with the Williams and Russell Development, which aims to honor and enrich Portland's Black community, create wealth, and promote a healthier economy by providing affordable rental apartments and homeownership, as well as business opportunities for the community, especially those whose families were impacted by displacement. With early pre-development investment by Prosper Portland and future, a future total commitment of over 23 million from Prosper and the Portland Housing Bureau, the project has collectively secured 10.3 million in pre-development funding from Oregon Housing and Community Services, congressionally-directed spending, Portland Clean Energy Fund, and Meyer Memorial Trust Justice, Justice Oregon for Black Lives. So all of those parties contributed. The project is in the pre-development phase with a focus on land parcelization and transfer. The first project to go into construction is the Affordable Home Ownership Project, which will offer 20 two-to-three-bedroom homes for sale to low- and moderate-income families and individuals at the 60% to 120% AMI level. The townhomes will be completed by June 30, 2026. The project was also selected as part of Prosper Portland's North Northeast Cultural Business Hub for further investment in the teneting and programming of the Black Business Hub project. We are also excited by Daimler Trucks, North American, New, North America's new investments at its headquarters complex on Swan Island. The company will invest $40 million for a new engineering facility and $3 million for a new vehicle electric, excuse me, for a new electric vehicle supply equipment training center, which will be located adjacent to Electric Island at Daimler's campus. The training center is funded in part by a $1.5 million forgivable loan authorized by Prosper Portland's Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, May 7. While the Daimler Engineering Facility will receive a five-year tax abatement via the Enterprise Zone, E-zone program, in addition to a $700,000 forgivable loan from the State of Oregon Strategic Reserve Fund. Also, last summer, Prosper Portland entered into a lease agreement with Happy Go Lucky Childcare as part of our teneting of the Nick Fish Building adjacent to the Gateway Discovery Park, and as part of our affordable housing, excuse me, affordable community, commercial development program. The childcare facility is leasing over 5,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, helping to activate ground-floor space on a key commercial corridor while also addressing gaps in childcare, a critically needed community servicing, excuse me, critically needed community servicing business. The tenant is participating in the Preschool for All program and has been working closely with Monmouth County to leverage additional capacity building funds. Prosper Portland has helped to ensure prominent businesses recommit to and expand in Portland. Dos Hermanos Bakery outgrew their 1,500-square-foot North Portland location and committed to a new 5,500-square-foot Portland headquarters at Southeast Stark and Southeast 10th. Prosper Portland provided a $410,000 loan to help with tenant improvements and a $470,000 loan to help with equipment purchases as part of their expansion. As a result, the bakery is able, will be able to grow from 57, from a 57-employee business, 97% Hispanic, to an anticipated 98-employee business over the next three years. So that gives you an idea of the scope of some of our projects, from large to small, from, you know, a very complicated, sizable development to retention of small businesses and helping them grow.
And a nice distribution, a nice diversity of different employers and different partners, and it's wonderfully spread throughout the community, it sounds like. I've got a question, a follow-up question about the Daimler Project. You mentioned training, and so whenever I hear the word "training," that to me is kind of a, oh, education, I should ask a question about this, right? I was in education, I should. So is Daimler, Daimler actually going to be doing the training, or they get a contract or partner with one of our community colleges or universities or something like that to do, do this training? And what kind of training is it? Are you, can you share that with me?
Well, my understanding is Daimler is actually doing the training, and it has to do with, you know, Daimler is launching this larger project to convert their truck manufacturing and heavy trucking lines to electric. And they've got a very aggressive deadline for that. I think it's something like 20 years from now, they're going to be 100% electric. And so this, this, this training facility is oriented towards the training necessary to get that going.
Yeah, and Director Flaherty-Battin.
Of Economic Development here at Prosper Portland. Chair Cruz is 100% right. It's intended for Daimler themselves to do the training, not just for their own engineering fleet. There's a lot of work that goes into all the engineers they have on staff moving towards electrification. It's potentially the largest campus that we'd have regionally towards fright electrification. And so the training center is separate from the larger headquarters, but the idea is they could become a hub of training these types of engineers from across the nation. So it's very exciting. We're really thrilled by the partnership.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of the backstory to that is, you know, it was a, it was kind of a major initiative to try to retain all of that in Portland, because Daimler, needless to say, has a national and international footprint where some of these, these things could go anywhere. And so there was a lot of effort put into trying to, you know, provide incentives and provide different ways to persuade them to, to bring that to our local area. And that was something Prosper took the lead on and we're very proud of.
I could add something to that. As someone in the electric mobility space, I would say that the efforts that Daimler and PGE are undertaking on Swan Island are exemplary in the entire industry, not just in our city. And the groundwork that they're laying for electrification allows companies of all sizes to establish footprints that kind of draft from the ancillary benefits from, from their leadership. So whether it's suppliers or the workforce training programs, the workforce development, like, these are resources that any business in the area that is in the electric mobility space can point to as existing infrastructure, personnel infrastructure, if you will, but actual physical infrastructure as well, that can benefit other companies in the electric mobility space. And Chair Cruz is correct that, you know, Portland was up against Michigan in, in the bid for this, and so we're able to kind of retain that leadership here. And so it is, you know, again, it is a mark to the, to the efforts of Prosper, but one that I think that benefits would not just affect the workforce for Daimler, but also create a bit of an ecosystem, a hub of electrification that can benefit from the efforts that they're putting into, into the region.
I had a follow-up.
Yeah, thank you.
The, last year, we talked about, there were big stories on the news about some big retailers leaving Portland, right? Target, Target Store leave, and Walmart, and REI, and all of those things. Certainly far less of that in the news. Do you think we've kind of hit the peak and are coming back? I love hearing the examples of Dos Hermanos and, and Daimler, and kind of rebuilding that trust and expansion of small businesses and things like that here. But I'm wondering if we have stemmed the tide and are, you know, we turn the corner post, or into endemic, post-pandemic? Where are we at, do you think?
Well, I don't really have statistics off my top, off the top of my head to share on that, but I would say, I think anecdotally, I think we're headed in the right direction now. You know, we're, we've lost some folks that I think we were disappointed to lose. You know, you mentioned REI, and there's been some, some, you know, some businesses that just didn't, didn't reopen either. You know, they either moved outside the jurisdiction or they, or they went under. And so to, as you say, to stem the tide, we've done a lot of work to try to turn that around, but then also to try to attract new folks. And it feels, it just feels like we're making progress that way. And if you look in the Business Journal, you see more and more, you know, incidents of, of folks opening places here. Would anybody like to add to that, or any, anything? If you have any statistics, that would be great, too. I don't have any.
Thank you so much, Chair Cruz, and thank you for the question. I think one of the things we're really excited about and looking forward to is the work of the Small Business Office that Director Flaherty-Battin and his team will be looking at, that specifically will be supporting the small businesses we see here in Portland. We think about the business incentive tax, the business tax incentive that we were able to recently extend out so that more businesses can not only choose to stay here in Portland, but as they do, they are incentivized to do that. And so we're really, I think, proud of that work, want to lift up the Business Advancement Team and all the work under Pam Neal, the manager there, and the work that they continue to do to retain not only large employers like Daimler Truck, North America, and so many others, as you've indicated. I think that is the type of work that happens every day, oftentimes behind the scenes, that really do keep folks here, and as we know, such important jobs and efforts, as Commissioner Alvarez talked about, that really continue to make certain that Portland can be a hub for what we hope to grow into. So we're really excited about what's happening, yeah.
Just to switch gears to talk about funding a little bit. So we would imagine that increased reliance on the city's general fund could be tricky. And Prosper Portland is now competing against other bureaus for what are limited funds. Do you have a plan for approaching this?
Get this one. So the fiscal year 2024, '25 budgeted, which was approved by City Council, is consistent with the budget note previously approved by City Council allocating, returning TIF to Prosper Portland to support citywide economic development programs as TIF districts ended. The budget approved is 5% less than the original $8 million figure as a result, as a result, general fund constraints, but was approved as ongoing funding that will be part of the base budget in fiscal year '25, '26. The increased funding brings the total general fund allocation in line to peer bureaus like the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. Prosper Portland was previously over-reliant on tax increment financing and tax increment resources and unable to provide adequate level of service across the city. The increased resources fully fund staffing and operations that leverage other non-TIF capital resources in the Strategic Investment Fund, community development block grants, EDA revolving loan fund, and other resources that small business assistants grant and technical assistance, events and activities and lending programs across the city outside existing TIF districts. Program outcomes achieved by general fund allocations and other non-TIF resources will be reported annually to the City Council as part of the budget process. Prosper will have continued engagement with City Council and their staff in the future with the city administrator and deputy city administrator to understand city, the city of Portland priorities. The budget reflects increased staff capacity for this purpose.
Do you have a follow-up as well? Just curious. I know that earlier you mentioned partnerships with like Meyer Memorial Trust, and so like philanthropic dollars and dollars that are outside of the public sector. Is that something that you can access regularly to leverage, I guess, general fund dollars to use for staffing and operations? Or just curious if that's part of the, is it more for like the partnerships of big projects?
I think Tony would be best to answer.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Tony Barnes, CFO. There's a couple of different pots of funds, the fund operations. It's primarily now the general fund with the returning TIF. It makes up about 40% of the operating budget. The other balance are the expiring
The other balance are the expiring TIF districts like the Interstate Gateway Lenz and, and other districts over the next couple of years. So the other real component of our, our financial sustainability plan is looking at how to leverage future investments out of the expiring TIF districts, out of other resources from lending programs to kind of make up that third tier of resources to support operations. So it comes down to really the general fund, TIF districts, and return on investment for different types of programs. From a foundational program perspective, we're not looking at any grants for major operational support.
Commissioner Myers, you actually spurred a question in my mind. I know it's looking into the crystal ball a little bit, but with the reorganization of the city now with a, with a city manager council form of government, many more commissioners. How do you think that will, and traditionally, the, I almost said PDC, Prosper Portland, excuse me, old habit, has been under the mayor's portfolio. How do you see that relationship changing going forward?
I think that it's going to be a little more streamlined because it's, instead of the duplicative nature of some of the bureaus that we had, there were duplicative processes throughout. I think that this will streamline it and there's going to be one person or two people to go through to get the questions answered. And that's, that's my perspective on it.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I would agree, and I think we are excited to bring on a team of staff under and with the work of our policy manager, Justin Douglas, to really ensure that we can work with the DCA and within our service area, ensure that we are able to connect across with regard to needs that we might have, policy needs that we might have. And to, to Commissioner Myers's point, I think the alignment of how questions and the work should go is something we're all looking forward to understanding a bit better, right? There's a lot that will happen in the next two years. But what I know is both Donnie Olivera and the work of his team right now is really to ensure that we're all aware of how that will happen and how we can best align moving forward. So we're excited about the relationship we have with Donnie and what we can do in the future.
We'll look forward to asking you in a year.
Yeah, there you go. We'll see. Thank you.
Thanks. So as part of the 22, 23 budget process, city council directed Prosper Portland to complete a third party evaluation of all TIF districts associated with returning TIF revenues to better understand how outcomes aligned with the original intent of district creation. Generally speaking, what were the results of this TIF performance analysis? Did original goals align with the outcomes?
Thank you for your question, and I will take that one. So following are the three research questions that Eco Northwest was asked to address as part of their third party evaluation. First, what might have happened in areas that are part of TIF districts had TIF not been available? Second, how did demographics change in the TIF districts versus other districts? Third, how did TIF contribute to a faster or slower rise in rents? And finally, what unintended consequences occurred? So among the major findings in the report, relative to non-TIF comparison areas, TIF districts saw six times the amount of total square footage of development, 25 times the amount of high density development, four times the growth rate in housing production, 5,300 units of TIF funded affordable housing, that's 46% of all affordable housing built in the city, and 24,000 more jobs, which generally had 20% higher wages. Neighborhoods with TIF districts saw substantially more private investment, market rate housing and affordable housing than comparison areas. Rent grew more quickly in some districts, but that increase was slower than it might have been had there been less new construction. Overall, housing precarity in TIF districts improved. BIPOC populations were impacted in distinct ways. The Albina neighborhood with its concentration of black residents disproportionately felt the effects of interstate TIF investments. The neighborhood saw an outmigration of its black population even as other districts' BIPOC populations increased slightly, excuse me, increased slightly faster than in comparison areas. In the remainder of the city, by contrast, BIPOC populations grew faster than in TIF districts or comparison areas. The consulting team also offered some key lessons learned, particularly as the agency explores new potential district, TIF districts in East Portland and the central city, including a focus on significant new housing production by producing new housing needed across income levels, reduce systemic barriers to economic opportunity before and during investments in infrastructure or other catalytic projects. And finally, to build community trust by committing to accountability and transparency.
Speak to an agent. Speak to an agent.
Hello? Good. Build community trust by committing to accountability and transparency on who benefits from public investments and reporting on outcomes. The city council accepted the report on April 10, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I think you identified, you know, one of the negative unintended consequences was the outmigration of BIPOC communities from, were there other negative consequences that came out of this analysis?
Off the top of my head, I don't think so. I don't really have anything to add in that regard. I was going to elaborate on a slightly different point, though, that's not covered here. And that is, you know, this, this kind of conclusion really is oriented towards key lessons. And we've already encountered some of those key lessons with our 42nd Avenue TIF district, which is, which was more of a, the Cully area, which was more of a community driven district than we've had in the past. And I think that's been part of the criticism and has led to some of the negative results that we had in North Portland, for example, north and northeast, where in old school TIF districts were very top down and resulted in pretty dramatic gentrification and negative consequences for the people who live there. And now the model kind of goes the other direction. And so I think, you know, in our planning for new TIF districts, we're trying to incorporate that sort of thinking and that sort of community outreach, and we're looking forward to better results in those areas.
Thank you. I live in that district, so.
Great.
Off right off of 42nd, so looking forward to seeing all the good stuff happening.
Excellent, thank you.
If you don't mind, if I could do a callback, and thank you for that discussion, Chair Cruz. Interstate, when I was there, when it came out, it was all about light rail at that time and transit oriented development. And that brought a lot of concerns by the community because they weren't building housing for the families and people that lived there. And I heard in your opening remarks that you are now investing in larger type housing units, I think you mentioned on Russell Street. Has that been a change of philosophy over the years for PDC to build more housing that would be suitable for, for families and larger households?
Yeah, and you know, we, we do that work in conjunction with the Housing Bureau. We provide funding, which goes to the Housing Bureau via our set aside, which we have to adhere to every year. And so I think, I think that's true. And I don't know, Chabri, if you want to add anything to that?
Absolutely. So the 45% set aside with regard to TIF districts is something that we absolutely appreciate the work that we're able to do with PHB, who leads those efforts. We're also excited about the work that Advanced Portland, our recent inclusive economic development strategy, calls us to do, which really looks at kind of that missing middle, recognizing that affordable housing certainly there and so important for many in our community. And what sometimes people characterize as workforce housing is also just as important when you look at an array of housing options within a neighborhood. And to Chair Cruz's point, I think the co-creation model and really truly looking at governance models are what help us consider not only community voice throughout, you know, each five-year action plan, but really looking at an exploration. And so right now, as the TIF district concepts are coming, it really is an exploration that we're in with community versus, you know, what maybe was experienced in the past, just kind of here's a TIF district and that's what we're looking at. And when we look at large infrastructure, we're working with community to determine what are the projects that they're looking for? And how do we mitigate things like displacement through really strengthening and stabilizing community first and planning on that, especially in early years?
Next question. So can you tell us more about, and you've touched on this, I think Commissioner Myers touched on this, about the Strategic Investment Fund, which was introduced as part of the Advanced Portland Plan? We understand these funds are to address gaps in access to capital for early start developers in the, and community identified priorities. What is the process for determining who receives this funding? And how do you report back to the community about how these dollars are being used?
I'll take this one. So as with other sources of funding, Prosper Portland invests in loans or real estate activities. Investment of the Strategic Investment Funds are guided by the Financial Investment Policy and other loan related guidelines and real estate policies. Within the Financial Investment Policy, the Strategic Investment Fund is identified to be used for income generating activities, operations, and capital needs that address community and small business needs through citywide activities, such as business and commercial property lending, commercial mixed use and industrial real estate acquisitions, and renovation and improvement of existing revenue generating properties to improve service to community and responsibly manage public assets. The approved budget allocates $16.8 million to lending and property acquisitions or improvements within the next fiscal year. While there's flexibility in the funding, $2 million is currently budgeted for small business lending, $4.8 million for commercial and middle income housing lending, and $10 million for potential property improvements. Some of the funding designated for lending in the first year of, of the Strategic Investment Fund fiscal year 23 to 24 is anticipated to carry over into next year as disbursements occur on approved small business and middle income housing loans and projects.
So are some of those dollars in TIF dollars from some of the districts?
They are not TIF dollars from the districts, they're from the SIF fund, okay? Yeah.
Okay. So no, no gap?
Yeah, they're program, program investment, program income, excuse me. Yes, program income funds.
And reviewing your budget, you had a couple of expiring districts. I think Airport Way was one that had pretty significant balances. Can those dollars now be redirected outside of the urban renewal areas? And what kind of, does that, can that be legally done?
Yes, there are several expiring districts where there, if there's program income remaining in the fund, not TIF dollars, then those are planned to move into the capital for Strategic Investment Fund for future loans and investment citywide, consistent with those financial policies.
Can you help me understand the difference between program income and TIF dollars?
So it's not bond proceeds, short term or long term? It's been return from property sales or interest on loans, lease payments.
Can I ask a follow up? So those dollars move back out into the community in the form of loans? Are those market rate loans or are they below market rate? What, what makes them appealing in a competitive market? What makes them appealing to developers?
Yeah, I'd love to actually ask Director Abouf to come up and share a little bit more. Her team leads the SIF effort. Lisa?
Is that Lisa Abouf? Hello, Lisa, how? I haven't seen you in forever. Nice to see you.
Yeah, okay, that's better. It's on. So our lending team actually just brought before our board pivoting of our loan products, knowing that two things were occurring. One, we had Advanced Portland and we had identified access to capital as a key issue for folks who have not, can't get access to capital out in the market, so we know that's the case. We also know right now that capital markets are really tight for development projects across the board, and so we see significant demand. So the way, we're still kind of us, so we don't want to compete in the market. We're not competing with private lenders, either because of challenges to access to capital or because projects are just frozen up and they can't get access to capital today. We're actually seeing a pretty significant demand. Last year was the highest volume of lending that we did. And so I think it's actually a pretty powerful way for tax increment finance districts who have received investment to date to be able to kind of revolve resources back out into citywide resources via our, so we have commercial property loans, but we also now have a bigger pool of working capital loans for small businesses so we can fund operations, equipment purchases, et cetera.
So continuing on the subject of TIFs, the East Portland TIF Exploration Steering Committee has been looking at options for new districts around 82nd Avenue, east of 205, and in the Park Rose Columbia area. What would you say is the timeline for exploration of these and when could we expect to see some concrete outcomes?
The exploration process for the East Portland TIF districts began in August 2023 and is still active, as is the central city TIF exploration process. Engagement as part of the process includes a community steering committee, area specific working groups, community led engagement conducted through stipends to the, to community based organizations, agency led engagement events, and a community based staff person in East Portland. Staff currently anticipate bringing a package of up to three East Portland, three central city dip, TIF district proposals to Prosper Portland Board on August 20, 28, 2024. Hmm, a couple of months. If the board approves any, any or all of these draft TIF plans, that will launch a formal consult and confer process with affected taxing jurisdictions. It is expected that there will be a non-emergency ordinance at the October 23, 2024 city council meeting. If any districts are approved by city council, they will begin accruing TIF in fiscal year 2025. During that first year, staff from Prosper Portland and Portland Housing Bureau will convene community stakeholders to begin the action planning process, which articulates investment priorities, phasing and outcomes for the first five years of the district, TIF district. God, that's tongue tied. Sorry.
Thank you. I love hearing about the community led engagement and that guidance from the community in this process, given what you shared earlier about how TIF districts used to be, you know, had, you know, been known in the past for displacing residents and things like that. So I'm curious, you know, it sounds like throughout the process, they're, they're super engaged. I'm wondering after things are in place and if there's, is there an opportunity for communities to reassess, like if things are working well? I'm just wondering if there's a process for that.
I would think so. I would hope so. And I'm sure it is. I know we've heard from communities periodically, and so I think that is a really important process as we're doing this, because that lets us know where we've had some gaps in service, so that way we can go back and fix what we can. And also being upfront and accountable to our communities, and that's what we want to continue to do.
Absolutely. And I would say the, every five-year action plan is, is exactly that. It's a chance for the staff to work directly with community to determine kind of how did the last five years go and are we on track? And let's really look at those investments that we're interested in, and let's plan for that. As well, Chair Cruz mentioned the work that was happening or that's happened in Cully to really consider new governance models. And dependent upon each of the districts, each of those working groups are considering what governance model makes most sense for them. Not everyone is saying we want to do exactly what happened in Cully, but many are extremely appreciative of the work that Dana and Roger and Catherine have been engaging in, especially in East Portland, to really consider how best to engage community. So those five-year action plans serve as those times where we as staff will work with community to specifically look at what is their plan for the next five years.
And I will just add, as history has shown us, community voice does matter in, in this process as we're going forward.
I live close to Cully. I'm over in Concordia, right on the edge there. What is, how does the community engage to initiate a new TIF district? Or do you recruit community leaders through a process that you've developed and train them or encourage them to start this process, whatever this process is, to get this new TIF going? How does, how does that work?
I can, I can jump in, okay. I wanted to make sure I gave them a chance. Well, I think it's, you know, there are a myriad of ways. So I would say, especially when we think about East Portland, there had been conversations that had been going on for a while with East Portland Action Plan, thank you, Lisa, where they had been asking about considering TIF. And so in partnership with the mayor and commissioner's office, offices, we were able to secure funding to do exactly that. So you heard about the stipends and the time to gather community and host open houses, many of which I'll mention. We have many going on now and more that will continue to host so that folks have a chance to share their voice. And I would say, kind of where we are in the midst of COVID, when we think about downtown, there were some areas that are saying like, why hasn't it started yet, right? So it's a little bit different than some of the others. But exploration as a whole, I think, is a method that we appreciate because it means community is right there next to us, considering everything from boundaries to what are those top priorities for investment? And that happens all the way up. And that happens all the way up through the process, as Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley just mentioned.
Thank you. And I've got the next one. So as a group of citizens that are volunteers and interested in these kinds of issues and topics and budgets and such, we're very interested in any of the community involvement work that's being done. And we understand that you have a community involvement committee, and that it's been, as you just expressed, a big part of crafting the final requested, in this case, the budget request proposal. From your view, what made the process of working with this committee successful? And what techniques have you used to recruit folks to participate in these types of groups?
That would be again, Mark. The Prosper Portland Community Budget Committee is comprised of approximately 15 members who represent geographic and industry-based and community economic development partners. Many of the members of the CBC have participated on the committee for well over five years, which has helped provide institutional knowledge of a budget that has well over 20 funds and different colors of money. I like that. That said, there are also new members who bring fresh perspective and community voice that is an important, that is critical to CBC deliberations. The Board considers the CBC one of the most trusted and important advisory committees, volunteering their time to provide guidance and feedback to the agency.
So the logical follow-up to this is, the one that we often ask, and we probably asked you last year, was, can you give us an example of an instance where that committee made a recommendation or a suggestion or such, and it actually had an influence on some budget decision that you made?
The Mayor's Budget Direction directed all city bureaus, with the exception of police and fire, to propose a 5% cut to their ongoing budgets. Furthermore, the direction did not allow for any new budget asks. Cut years are obviously very difficult, so staff provided the CBC with two options on how to meet the Mayor's Budget Direction. Also, while also keeping true to agency priorities, the CBC met in person to discuss these options and ultimately created and proposed a third option that supported the Small Business Office while maximizing cuts to other general fund and cannabis business tax revenue programs.
So they offered up a suggestion, and was that taken?
Yeah, so that third option was directly decided in that in-person meeting. And so I think we offered multiple scenarios, as staff is often asked to do, and they said, well, can we do something different? And so that's the mix that we have now. So absolutely, very directly responded.
Okay, last question. In this budget, we see a decrease in financial assistance. We've talked the last few years about the support that Prosper Portland has provided to small businesses due to vandalism, due to the COVID pandemic as a whole, and just the, those increased needs that we've seen last few years. So seeing the decrease in financial assistance, is there just less need in that area? Or was it an intentional choice to cut because of financial constraints?
So I drew this one. So the primary reason that there's a decrease in financial assistance between this fiscal year and next fiscal year is actually related to the timing of lending budgets in the expiring TIF districts. As Director Abouf mentioned, we've actually seen an increase in demand for our financial assistance programs, both on the grant side and the loan side, over the last year. And generally, financial assistance in the TIF districts will be declining as the resources there are spent. However, we do anticipate that financial assistance in the current year budgeted related to the Old Town Action Plan, as well as the finalization of the Lentz TIF District, are not expected to fully fund this fiscal year and will carry over in subsequent budget revision into next fiscal year. We also anticipate some declines in TIF district lending to be offset by increased investments in the Strategic Investment Fund-funded lending activity over the next several years. That was a mouthful.
Yeah. So, it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a logistic, it's a process thing, and an availability of funds, not a decrease in need. Are there, are there things that Prosper, you have mentioned some of the work, some of the tangential work to this, but is there, are there things that you're doing specifically to support small businesses that are still experiencing these increased levels of vandalism or theft, or other things that are just threatening their day-to-day businesses?
I'll kick this one over, but I mean, obviously, a number of small business programs and grants that are available that we've discussed over the last few months.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I would point to, in particular, the repair grants, the restore grants, which the restore grant in particular is really so deeply responsive to communities, saying a repair grant is helpful, but there are so many other things that we're still dealing with that oftentimes kind of flood into operations or recognition that insurance rates have increased, or securing the envelope of their business is extremely important. And so huge kudos to Ellen and Laz, who have been leading those efforts, and really ensuring that we could listen directly to small businesses and create efforts that make sense. And then I'll just point back to what we mentioned earlier about the Small Business Office. And the CBC, when we were looking at our budget, really saying they wanted to ensure that there was direct support there. So we're excited about that work, and also excited about the work that Donnie Olivera and the permit team, I know it's not really going to be called SPA, but the, you all have heard this, but the permit team that's really looking at, kind of honing in on what small businesses need to do. And so we're excited about the work that we do in partnership across the board to ensure that small businesses do have the support that they need, and that we're responsive in the ways that feel most aligned with their requests.
Okay, go ahead, Todd. We have, yes, I think so. I think we can do it.
I'm just curious about these newer URAs like Cully, and potentially out east of 82nd Street and that area. It's going to probably take a while to build up a tax increment to have it actually mean something in terms of the dollars, particularly probably in Cully. So will you be investing other resources into those neighborhoods to begin to activate them in the way you plan to? Program dollars or whatever might be available?
So I think, and I think this came up with the response that the Chair provided earlier, I think there's been a lot of community conversation. Actually, they're really interested in making sure that some of the earliest investments in Cully are, in fact, are smaller grants to support small businesses, to support residents in space. So that's the, the Housing Bureau administers single-family kind of home products to help people purchase or to make repairs to their home. We offer our small business grant that can help a business kind of make the improvements in preparation for some larger investments. So I do think there's actually a lot of interest in us phasing our investment appropriately, and I, we are already in conversations, I would say, with Cully partners, who are thinking very much along the lines you are, which is, how do we leverage some of the early dollars of tax increment finance to actually be match, to go out for nonprofits or community-based organizations in Cully, to go out and put in applications to foundations or other third-party kind of investors, because they can leverage it as a match, and that's the way that we would identify additional resources. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your contribution to the discussion. I know we threw lots of follow-up. We appreciate all of your answers in providing clarity to not only us, but to the public as a whole, about Prosper Portland and the work that you do. So with that, we have a little business to accomplish. I will close the hearing and open a regular business meeting of the TSCC. Commissioners, do you have any additional comments on the budget?
No.
Okay. Allegra, would you please provide the staff recommendation for the certification letter?
Yes, and I would like to first say that's been a pleasure, as always, to work with the Budget and Finance Staff here at Prosper Portland. We so appreciate them and their willingness to be responsive to any discussions or questions about budget issues, and just their diligence throughout the process. So we, as staff, found the budget estimates to be reasonable for the purposes stated and in substantial compliance with budget law. Staff suggest no recommendations or objections to the fiscal year '24, '25 approved budget.
May I have a motion authorizing the Commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by staff?
I guess I'm the one. Okay. So yes, I would like to move that we do that.
He's going to miss making motions when he's not here.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Prosper Portland budget is certified by TSCC. Allegra follows up very quickly with a signed letter for all of you. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting perfectly on time, which I appreciate. Give you a couple minutes before your board meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks to all of you for coming, and it's been a pleasure, been a pleasure having you. There we go. Yes. No, not, no, actually, they just had it. I didn't do it this year, but maybe next year. Yeah. 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 Okay, so we're going to have a very brief break, and then we'll be back in just a couple minutes.
I'm going to get some water.
I'm gonna get some water.
Commissioner Slick? Commissioner Alvarez?
Present.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley?
Present.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland has provided an opportunity for the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There's also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. At this time, the public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. All right, next is commissioner reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report this month? Okay. Then we'll go to the executive director report, and Chabri Vickers is filling in for Kimberly Branham today.
Thank you so much, Chair Cruz and commissioners. I'm honored to join you today as executive director Branham enjoys some much deserved time away. Events this past weekend, as well as this coming Wednesday, provide opportunities for Portlanders to honor and celebrate Juneteenth. Last Saturday was a community parade and festival on MLK Boulevard. This past Sunday was the Eight Seconds Juneteenth Rodeo, and many Prosper staff and Commissioner Carmen Rubio attended along with over 7,000 others who made up the sold out crowd. And tomorrow, Wednesday, June 19th, is the Juneteenth Freedom Celebration at MISO Maker's Market, excuse me. And we invite everyone to celebrate Juneteenth with local makers at the MISO Makers Market on Alberta, at the Alberta Commons from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be food, local vendors, wine tasting, family activities, and live music, and this is absolutely a great opportunity to celebrate Juneteenth and support local artisans and makers. And of course, all ages are welcome. You can go to misopdx.org and click on the events tab for more information. Last Wednesday, Prosper Portland shared the Economic Impact Statement Resolution Presentation at City Council. And starting in September, the impact statement that the city bureau submit for council consideration will include a new section related to potential impacts to the economy and housing development. As a reminder, an updated economic impact statement in city resolutions and ordinances was a directive of the Advanced Portland Plan. City Council unanimously passed the resolution, which was introduced by Commissioner Rubio. I want to take a moment to thank Justin Douglas and Allison Schweiger for all of their work in preparing the resolution and the related materials. Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau are currently exploring opportunities for potential new tax increment finance districts in the central city and East Portland to facilitate thriving neighborhoods and build upon years of community planning efforts. Prosper Portland and PHB are hosting another in-person open house to provide an update and facilitate a dialogue with community members. Please join our second East Portland Open House Thursday, June 27th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Rosewood Initiative in Southeast to learn more. And I'm absolutely pleased to note that the Affordable Commercial Teneting or ACT grant is now up and available in the Interstate Corridor Tiff District. The ACT grant, which was before you last November, provides funding to property owners and small business owners who are in the process of negotiating a lease. The program is intended to facilitate access to commercial space and support inclusive business growth. Grant funds may be used for tenant improvements, space-related soft costs, and permitting support to ready space to open for business. Technical assistance may also be available for business support. And for more information, you can go to prosperportland.us/ACT. On the events front, there are several updates we'd like to mention. In particular, June is Pride Month, and Prosper Portland is highlighting local businesses, leaders, and events on our social media platforms. So please check in for regular updates, and we also encourage anyone who wants to learn more and get involved to visit pridenorthwest.org. Now, Saturday and Sunday, June 8th and 9th, was the 14th edition of My People's Market. And more than 150 vendors participated in the summer edition of the market and celebrated this year's block party theme at the Red on Salmon. And I want to recognize the team who worked to ensure it was a huge success, including Amanda Park, Michelle Comer, Shawna Noah, Burke Nelson, Lisa Norwood, Yume Delegato, Elise Taylor, and Ness Zolin. The Portland Rose Festival has just wrapped up, and by all accounts, this year's activities and events were very well attended and supported by residents and visitors alike. I want to thank the Portland, the Prosper Portland Events and Film Team for all of their work with the Rose Festival and City Bureau partners. Coordination is crucial to any large-scale event, let alone a series of large events held over several weeks. Kudos go to Burke Nelson, Amanda Park, Ness Zolin, and Elise Taylor, along with Yume Delegato, Lisa Norwood from the Communications Team, and of course, Sean Ullman. Now, lastly, Portland has been chosen to host the inaugural Rockstar Energy Open, taking place from Friday, August 23rd to Sunday, August 25th, at Waterfront Park. The Rockstar Energy Open will invite more than 100 top-tier and up-and-coming skateboarders to skate on courses purpose-built for displaying the world's best skateboarding. This announcement by Rockstar speaks to Portland's position in the skateboarding world, and it also adds another, it adds another large event to the central city's list of activations, which is welcome news for downtown hotels, retailers, and restaurants. And lastly, we want to congratulate Chair Cruz on his reappointment for his next term as Prosper Portland Chair. And welcome Felisa Hagens, who will begin her term as a Prosper Portland Board Member in July. We look forward to introducing you next month, Felisa. And we will end with that for now.
Thank you very much. It's a great report. Okay, next up, we have the meeting minutes for May 21, 2024. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All is in favor of approval?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, and next we have item six, which is public comment for items not on the agenda. And I have two cards with folks who are here, Faith Aitken and Lazarus Romanke. Would you both like to come up together? I believe you're here on the same topic.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Vickers. My name is Faith Aitken, and I'm here to give public testimony in my capacity as our local AFSMI 3769 Union President. During the day here at Prosper Portland, I am the Equity Outcomes Analyst. I serve in the Equity Policy and Communications Department and have done so for the last five years. I wanted to take time this afternoon to tell you a little bit about why I love working here and how it has been a fit for me and my career. In my 12th grade calculus class, Mrs. Sangston had a poster of two people sitting on a dock with a simple invitation. Everyone has a story to tell. It was the juxtaposition of math equations and personal story that resonated with me and catapulted me into a career that I love. How as public servants do we represent serving communities in quantifiable ways? How do we use data for accountability, and how do we center the people most impacted by systems of oppression in our storytelling? I've had the pleasure of using these skills on a number of projects you're familiar with. The Small Business Relief Fund, the Business and Workforce Construction Equity Policy, the retooling of the Inclusive Business Resource Network, and the launch of the Repair and Restore Grants. I am annoyingly committed to transparency and learning, and I have had the opportunity to do that here. Another, another critical component of my own identity is my extroversion. I love learning about people, I love welcoming people, and I love a good party. You won't see me networking, but you will see me involved. I've served on Equity Council, co-led the BIPOC affinity, organized our trainings on intersectionality, and been proud to coordinate the production of our annual Pets of Prosper Portland calendar. Simply put, when given the chance, I will always choose to be an active member in our community. Now, at this point, it's fair for you to be curious about what's the point? Why would I be sharing with you about my story and my career? I don't have a hidden agenda, but I do have an agenda. It's important to me that you get to know our union members. Month after month, you hear about our work, about the communities that we serve, and how ultimately our projects aim to support a more equitable Portland. The workforce of Prosper Portland is diverse. For the first time, more than half of our staff is made up of people of color. In the same way the agency has been working hard to shift our work, we have also worked hard to shift our internal culture. Chair Cruz, you recently made another three-year commitment to the city by agreeing to serve another term on the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for making that commitment. Like you, the members of the union are about to make another three-year commitment to Prosper Portland in the form of our collective bargaining agreement. Negotiations like this can be intense. They're intense because we're intensely committed to our work. We want to stay here. We want to put in good work here. We want to learn here, and we want to grow here. My ask is this. Our hope is that you will soon see a contract to approve, but there are areas where we're stuck. The workforce has three key priorities that align with Prosper Portland being an employer of choice. Opportunity for career growth, flexibility, and competitive market rate salaries. When you consider our contract, I hope you consider our stories and our hard work. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon to our commissioners and our, and also director, and also Pam, hello. My name's Lazar Manque. I'm a relatively fresh member of the Prosper Portland staff and aforementioned union. I've been around for almost two years, but I've been a formal employee for about one. To start off with my whole life story, with the early stuff. I grew up in Albuquerque, New Mexico. I was the, the son of a government worker and a small business owner. And I was also the first in my family to speak English as a first language instead of Spanish. And I, the first time I ever came to Portland, by happenstance, was the Rose Festival. And I was blown away by the city and the flowers and the greenery and how much respect everyone had for this, like, long-running tradition. It was unlike anything my best friend and I had ever seen in our hometown. So we basically instantly made the decision to move here. We packed up our apartment, we packed up our dog, we packed up our Playstation, and we drove across the country. And I have lived in the Sumner neighborhood for over a decade now. My career journey is a little unconventional compared to what I typically see here at Prosper. I came from the service industry, actually. I started my professional journey at a small-town coffee shop you may know as Starbucks. I had a handful of roles and wore many hats there. I managed operations at a bunch of downtown locations here in Portland. I also was a coordinator for the city during the pandemic, the heat of the pandemic. And then I was a program manager for the Queer Affinity Group in the Pacific Northwest region. I'm super eternally grateful for my experience there. And picture it, 2022, I had a fresh bachelor's degree. I had over a decade of operations and program management experience. I had just experienced a life-altering and world-altering global pandemic, and I had a dream. I think I was ready for like a bit of a shift in my career. And I knew that I wanted to go in a direction where I would be managing programs with a lens of diversity and equity and inclusion. And I knew that I wanted to work for something a bit more local than my previous employer. And I knew that my experience would help me kind of get a foot in the door in HR from what I had experienced previously. So that is how I arrived here at Prosper. I worked for the HR department as a temp worker for about eight months. I expected to have just like a really temporary temp role where I was just building experience for the next step in my career. And I was just so enamored by the mission and the values and the culture of the agency that I really wanted to stick around. So I was able to get hired on in an ARPA-funded position, supporting the restore and repair grants, and then later the winter storm relief grant. Since arriving, I have dispersed almost, well, the team has, almost $3.3 million in grants to small businesses who are impacted by burglary and vandalism, and also the winter storm in January, which has been incredible. I've personally helped out 230 business owners so far, which has been, this is a wild year. Working at Prosper Portland has been an incredible experience, connecting with my community and learning more about the city that I love, and just helping Portland be her best self has been, it's just been a really unexpected career journey, but like super welcome surprise in the steps that I've made, and I am really excited to go onward with it. The people here, many people behind me, are all incredible. I'm so excited for you to later hear from Wendy, known theater kid, and Joel, who's a known nerd and suspected theater kid. And then also Deborah, who is my fantastic desk mate, who just moved in a couple of months ago, right behind me. Theater kid status for her is unknown, but I hope to find that out soon. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for coming, both of you. Okay. All right. So we will move on to our, we actually have, we're actually going to do a regular agenda item before our consent agenda item. So our regular agenda item is item seven, and this is an action item adopting the annual budget of Prosper Portland for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, and making appropriations, and Tony Barnes will present. Welcome back, Tony.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners and Director Vickers. I'm Tony Barnes, CFO with Prosper Portland. Today, I'm here to represent the final action of the budget process for fiscal year 2425. For the budget that will commence on fiscal year 2425, and per Oregon State Budget Law, the budget may be adopted after the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission and City Council approval of the budget. Exhibit A to the resolution illustrates in total and by each fund, resources and appropriations as required by local budget law. And the schedule illustrates the budget that was approved by City Council on May 15th, the budget recommended for adoption today. The local budget law allows for a governing body, the commission, to make changes to expenditures in any fund, as long as it doesn't exceed more than 10% of expenditures. I'll discuss some of the changes to the budget that occurred during the budget approval with City Council, as well as what's being recommended for adoption today. Next slide, please. Go to the next slide. Thanks. So shown on this slide is a summary of all resources as rolled up in Exhibit A, showing the total change from the council-approved budget based on recommended changes. Changes to resources include updated assumptions on interest earnings based on anticipated cash balances that will support project and program in all Tiff districts, as well as real estate operations and holding costs. There's also a minor change related to a true-up for our COEP contract amount and some anticipated grant amounts. But overall, those changes are relatively low to resources. Next slide, please. The roll-up of expenditures and total fund requirements in Exhibit A shows total recommended expenditures appropriation of $208.9 million, a change of $445,000 from the council-approved budget. So I'll provide a couple additional details on these recommended changes in the upcoming slides. But before, I'll mention what council approved in a little bit more detail here. Next slide, please. As part of the council action, council approved over $22 million in ongoing and one-time general fund recreational and recreational cannabis funding to provide ongoing support to programs such as the Inclusive Business Resource Network, workforce development, and the Neighborhood Prosperity Program. Council also approved $7.6 million in returning Tiff requests that provides new programming, sporting or lending and real estate operations outside of the expiring Tiff districts, implements a small business office, and provides full-cost funding for all economic development programs, resulting about 40% of funding of all of Prosper Portland's operations. So this is really representing kind of the cornerstone of the budget into the next year with this additional funding. Council also approved our request for carryover of some current year funds to support ongoing restore grants and Tiff exploration work. And in addition, the mayor proposed and council approved additional one-time funding of $2 million, which included $1 million of funding for the Office of Events and Film, and additional $500,000 for repair grants, and additional one-time support to implement the small business office. So these are mainly one-time funds that will support additional grant resources, additional event and activity resources, but it does support extending some positions as well that were limited term. In total, general fund programming will be about $17.4 million for next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So the $22 million of general fund and cannabis dollars that are allocated by the City Council included also $4.6 million of cannabis fund funding. This included $3.2 million of ongoing support for the Reimagine and IBRN programs, and another $1.5 million in carryover dollars to support ongoing dispersments of the current Reimagine Oregon grants and seed fund grants that'll be dispersing after July 1. Next slide, please. One other major item in the approved budget includes $8.5 million for the Portland Clean Energy Fund allocation. That's new to this next fiscal year. That includes, this is really part of a larger $42.5 million proposal that Prosper Portland is working with the Clean Energy Fund on. Includes three broad categories here around small contractor business, business technical assistance, $5.5 million for a small commercial building and energy efficiency grants, which includes both citywide grant programs and focus grants on 82nd Avenue for business stabilization. It also includes $2 million for low-cost access to capital programs for climate-responsive commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects. And next slide, please. So this slide highlights what's being recommended as part of the adopted budget that's different than the council-approved budget. There's a total change of $174,000 for administration, about $96,000 for economic development, and $175,000 for property development across all the different funding sources rolled up. The administration includes an adjustment to personal services for anticipated increases based on ongoing negotiations for CBA contract, economic development, reallocation of personal services. This is mainly taking that personal services staffing amount and redistributing between categories of expenditure from administration to economic development or other categories. There is a $50,000 increase to There is a $50,000 increase to true-up the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program, COEP program, that was not included in prior versions, so we're just truing that budget up. And then property development, the biggest component, while it's a net change of $175,000, it does include an overall increase of $364,000 for some final percent for art funds that were returned from RAC to Prosper Portland to support projects in Oregon Convention Center, Downtown Waterfront, and Interstate TIF districts. So kind of the final resources related to those percent for art dollars that we'll be implementing in the upcoming budget. And there's some, also some decreases in personal services based on reallocation, but in total, the personal services allocation is the same as it was with the approved budget with exception for about what's showing in administration here, for $174,000. Next slide, please. So this last slide just highlights some next steps post-budget adoption. It includes a request for annual intergovernmental agreements we'll be bringing forth to you between July and September for the general fund and cannabis funds through the city budget office, the housing set aside with the Portland Housing Bureau, and the PSEF, Portland Clean Energy Fund with the Bureau of Planning Sustainability that we're working on right now. So those are three agreements that we'll bring forth. They'll be before council, too, for approval. Also, the revised one budget, we might bring this before you a little sooner this year than in prior years. A lot of the dollars, as we discussed with the TSCC for financial assistance, are still within the current fiscal year, and we anticipate needing to rule over some of those dollars sooner rather than later for the Old Town Action Plan. There's also some resources related to the Tenth and Yamhill Project that are transferring back to P-BOT that would need to be included in a budget revision. It was just a little bit too late in the process to get it into this adoption and do that 10% limit on increase in expenditures. Some of these were outside of that limit to bring forth today in this action. There's also the Senate Bill 1530 Grants, Broadway Quarter Infrastructure and OMSI Infrastructure Grants that we'll anticipate rolling into the budget early in the fiscal year to support those two projects with the state funding. Finally, budget and updated financial sustainability plan monitoring in the fall will be continuing to operate, evaluate operating expense, property income, expenses, loan production, and provide an updated forecast in the fall, most likely by December, to see how things are performing in the budget and moving forward. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Commissioners? Great. Well, thank you, Tony. Really appreciate your great work, and thanks to all Prosper staff for the tremendous work on the budget. It's a heavy lift, we know, and you do it smoothly every year, and we're just very, very appreciative. Also, one thanks, City Council for the boomerang funds and the additional support there. So thank you. Great. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
So seconded.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Passes in and out. Thank you.
I want to extend my big thanks also to Courtney Cone and Chan Se Lee in the Budget Office, and Justin Douglas for all the support with the CBC throughout the year, and all the Prosper staff. It's a big lift every year. Greatly appreciate everybody's work and dedication to it.
Thank you. Okay. So next, we're going to do our consent items. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the two consent items? We'll do them together.
So moved.
Your day, Willie. It's your special day.
It's a second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent items, pass. Okay. So now we go to the regular agenda again. This is item 10. This is an action item approving the Gateway Action Plan update, and Brian Moore and Joel DeValcourt will present. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Vickers. We're pleased to bring you the 2024 Gateway Action Plan update for consideration. Our request for this approval, if it's approved, the action plan update would actually also be brought to the City Council for final review and adoption in summer of 2024. As you recall, all of our work is focused on implementing aspects of the advanced Portland strategy for inclusive growth. The update to this action plan helps us deliver on numerous outcomes, including 3.5 supportive growth and health in businesses within commercial districts, 3.6 to activate vacant properties and storefronts with community service, community-serving businesses, and attracting new commercial development, outcome 3.7 to improve public streets and sidewalks in select districts to support the vitality of the business district, outcome 3.8 to address housing production across a continuum of affordability, and outcome 4.2 to build public-private partnerships to improve access to employment opportunities. Next slide. This work was made possible by a team of people, a really great team, that included the project manager Joel DeValcourt, as well as Director Abouaf, and from the budget team, Tony Barnes and Chan Se Lee, and our comms team, including Yume Delgado and Sean Omen. So big thanks to all of them to help make this happen. And to share the details of the action plan update, I'll turn it over to Joel.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Vickers. You can move to the next slide, Justin. Thank you. You may have seen a similar slide when we came here a couple of years ago, just to give you a refresher on where we've been over the last 20 years, some highlights in the Gateway TIF District. I'll go rather quickly, but feel free to interrupt me at any time with any questions. In 1995, Metro, the regional body, came up with a 2040 growth concept vision, and Gateway was included as, quote, "a regional center," and it was the only one outside of the downtown area. So it was intended to be East Portland's downtown center. And in order to kind of bring that forward in the year 2000, the city adopted the Opportunity Gateway Concept Plan. We're going to be fortunate enough to have some testimony, invited testimony today from Frida Christopher, who's been working in this neighborhood for a long time. Many of you know her with the school district and also as a former URAK member, and she can, you know, she has that history embedded in her. Prosper Portland adopted the TIF District in 2001, and shortly thereafter, most of the early TIF District investments were made in the Max Line extensions, providing a real backbone of regional transportation connectivity to the airport throughout the region and being kind of an employment density hub, particularly as we see from the healthcare industry. In 2006, the Oregon Clinic opened, which is a medical facility at Gateway Transit Center. And then in 2009 through 2018, a big shift towards equitable development investments in affordable housing and mixed-income housing, with the Russellville Commons, which is at Burnside, East Burnside and 102nd, the Orchards, which is a wonderful Habitat for Humanity project, Gleason Commons and Gilman Court, two rather large multifamily projects on Gleason. And then in 2016, a major pivot into the Gateway Action Plan, which was the first of our kind of community-driven plans, and this will be the second. In 2018 and 2021, the Gateway Discovery Park and Nick Fish opened, which was a really substantial investment from Prosper Portland, Parks and Rec, and other Portland Housing Bureau and other nonprofit partners to bring a really significant investment to the Halsey Weiler Cuplet. And then you all adopted the Gateway TIF District Extension, which removed the sunset in 2022, so we will be spending money in the Gateway TIF District till we reach our maximum indebtedness. Next slide, please. We had a very robust, for a short period of time, a very robust and engaged, deep, and in many ways empowering experience with new community partners, one of whom, you know, unfortunately is sick and is not going to make it today, our co-chair, Giovanni Batista, a young man who got his bachelor's degree in studying the Gateway TIF District and happened to be from East Portland, and was one of our members, and became co-chair based on his dedication and experience. So we have some fabulous youth leaders. In total, over the 18 months or so of our engagement process, we had 16 community advisory committee members, 62 focus group participants in five different community-prioritized focus groups, one of which included former URAK members who got to look at the kind of 20 years of investments and see where things had gone, where things should go based on their experience with the early plans. We were not able to get everyone around the table. As you know, it's difficult in these times to get everyone under one roof, and so conducted a thorough amount of one-on-one stakeholder interviews as a part of that focus group outreach. Just recently, in the kind of latter part of the winter, early spring, we held an open house in six different languages with multicultural foods from a number of countries, including those locations, and it was held in East Portland Community Center, which is a wonderful intergenerational multicultural community asset in East Portland. We worked as well with additional six different organizations that covered that area, nonprofits, as well as some government organizations and coalitions, and kind of deepened both our budget outreach as well as our strategic planning. We move to the next slide. As a part of our analysis, each of the focus groups, as well as our committee members, did a whole variety of SWAT analyses, and these were kind of the major things that came of it. As we know, that 24th growth concept idea of a regional center is a challenging one and comes with a number of public-private nonprofit foundation and additional investments. And so it's still unfolding, and Prosper Portland is still very much in Gateway. Some things, you know, in the real estate market in particular, continue to be fundamental barriers, both for the growth of wealth generation in housing as well as commercial activity. And even with these great transportation elements, improved zoning, it's been difficult to get investors and developers to overcome some of the kind of foundational barriers in the market in East Portland, particularly in Gateway. And really to kind of just simplify that, that the rents aren't justified in new development activity, and that's one of the challenges that we're working on, is trying to find the right environment in which to incentivize workforce housing and other commercial activity that can really meet the community where it is and meet the needs of the very multicultural and in many cases, international refugee community that is throughout East Portland, but in particular in Gateway. There are a number of street challenges. There's a Gateway Streets Plan that was adopted in 2009, has been really hard to build new streets, and we were excited to bring to you earlier this year, one new street investment that we're working on with P-BOT and the David Douglas School District, and that is currently moving forward in a number of complicated but interesting ways to bring new streets to the Gateway area. And we are encouraged by a number of things. We're encouraged by the existing multicultural business network and nonprofit network that has provided an incredible amount of social services, as well as wonderful goods, foods, and things to support the multicultural community there. There are a number of workforce and homeownership opportunities that we're excited to explore in this particular action plan and give a kind of economic diversity focus to an area that has a lot to build upon. And we're really excited to kind of work with empowering and diversifying our partnerships. As you can see from a number of the things that we're working on, both through our action plans, as well as our East Portland and Central City TIF exploration partnerships, are deepening, they're diversifying in ways that are unanticipated, and I think making our work stronger, and hopefully being able to bring in the private sector as well to invest. So just to provide a kind of broad overview of what's changing in this, one of the big kind of central components of the 2016 action plan was that there were three sub-districts. And we're deciding that it's more important, from what our community has provided us, to focus on priority investment areas, outcomes, and to have a more kind of vision and equity-focused type of framework that is kind of irrespective of any specific geographic sub-district. The idea is to really focus on stabilizing, activating, and diversifying, that's both in kind of the built form, but also in working with our people partnerships and making sure that this is a people-focused plan. Much of that is to celebrate that cultural diversity that's both apparent in Gateway and East Portland, and provide small businesses who may not be able to reach deeper into what could be a skewed retail market or commercial market and be able to meet them where they're at, so that we can actually really diversify businesses in this area. Supporting housing opportunity income diversification is really important. The vast majority, about 89% of the housing that's been built since 2010, has been de-restricted affordable, and so we have been able to stabilize, and a lot of that has come through TIF resources and partnerships with the HB. So we've been able to stabilize a number of families that have been displaced or repeatedly displaced throughout the region, and we also have, we're hoping to find mixed-income opportunities where that kind of economic spectrum can be shared throughout the community. And then we're really focusing on how to meet what Prosper can do with what we, you know, must do to activate a livable environment in struggling commercial areas. And so some of that will come through multicultural investments, intergenerational synergies, there's a strong healthcare sector, and there's a number of things that we're going to be building on through those partnerships. Next slide. So we're going to move now into the kind of the, just a vision that was pulled together by the community, and an iterative vision that I think is really powerful. So Gateway is envisioned as a gateway to the world that thrives due to multicultural diversity and inclusive economic opportunities. Gateway will be rooted with housing opportunities that meet the needs of all individuals and families, supporting new innovations that create wealth and connect residents to the Portland region's bustling economy. Through partnerships and direct funding, Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau will invest tax increment financing funds to bring vibrancy and livability to one of the city's vital transit centers and employment hubs. And on the next slide, we have a, just an opportunity to take that into mind, how we are taking these different buckets and working towards this idea of livability, wealth creation, and inclusion. So the three different investment buckets are inclusive economic growth and celebrating diversity, activating Gateway and working towards livability, and then producing a range of housing opportunities. So the next three slides will cover those three different issue areas, and then we'll finish with the budget. Next slide, please. For our inclusive economic growth and celebrating diverse business community, each of these areas, we have some community inspiration that we're taking from our focus groups, as well as our open house, and I think some really wonderful things, like, I love supporting diverse businesses, straight to the point. We have a lot of people looking to find literally a gateway to the world, whether it's trying new foods or it's finding things that they themselves would like to see in their own culture that may not be currently in East Portland, and we're hoping to support those businesses. So the actions that we're going to be taking in this area is to increase investments in small businesses, that's increasing our PIP grants, increasing our other business and loans, expanding the Affordable Commercial Tenenting Program. You just heard from Tony and Chabri, we're going to be going from interstate and then hopefully quickly expanding into Gateway, and really excited to work with property owners to bring some of these investments, both in the physical improvements, as well as deepening affordability for commercial tenants. The Nick Fish, as you may know, is a major investment that Prosper continues to play a role in teneting of the ground floor retail, and we are excited that a new daycare center is going to be opening up, and we have a number of other leasable spaces that we will be programming over the next couple of years to ensure that that really critical asset is fully activated. And then lastly, the business district organizational support component is really important. We need to be working in partnership with other business associations in the area and others that we identify through the East TIF exploration process, so that we make sure that businesses in the area continue to be supported well as times change. Next slide, please. Safety and livability, again, are kind of core to many of these things, and the outer room bicycle image here that you see is one great example where we are highlighting the wonderful work and grant finesse of one of our employees, Sarah King, who was working at the time for Venture Portland, and helped secure a beautiful facade, photographs don't do it justice, but it's a sculptural steel frame facade improvement to this bike shop that had been robbed repeatedly. And now Mount Hood and the sun are kind of, you know, very vibrantly displayed, but also providing business security. So what we're hoping to do is, rather than everybody shutting shop at the end of night, we're creating a new competitive grant program to help businesses with artistic facade improvements. That's action 2.2. We'll also be increasing the Community Livability Grant Investments on an annual basis. And then what we're doing is partnering primarily with the private sector, but also with nonprofits, to activate many vacant parcels that are at key locations that need some energy, along with development work that we're going to be doing in those areas. And then we have a number of infrastructure projects that will be kind of And then we have a number of infrastructure projects that will be kind of building upon our work to kind of create connectivity and a functional public realm. Next slide, please. And one of the critical pieces to this is looking at how we can strengthen the workforce housing investments that are so critical to both our citywide priorities, as well as many of the families that can't find an affordable place to live. And so the actions here are driven towards one, or what we're hoping is a one and a prospective second, mixed income workforce housing project in Gateway. And then we're excited to essentially put money behind one of our new programs, which the Action 3.2 is to do our commercial loans to incentivize small five-to-10 unit housing projects that will hopefully encourage homeownership in the area, because there's a number of spots that are perfect for that. And then lastly, this budget also includes the Portland Housing Bureau set aside, so we're going to be working in partnership with PHB to encourage construction of additional affordable housing. As I said, a lot of affordable housing has been produced over the last decade, and so what's great is that we can continue to build with their resources, but also provide that income diversity. Next slide, please. The total overall action plan budget for this five-year period is forecasted at about $65.6 million. About half of that, the green area, is for middlecome housing production opportunity. The blue is the affordable housing set-aside funds for PHB, and then the slivers for inclusive economic growth and activation and livability are both sizable portions of our budget, all of which, again, have pretty substantially increased all of our existing programs and new programs that will also be fully budgeted in the area. Next slide, please. And so this is the full list, and I don't have to go into all this, but provides a subtotal for the housing inclusive economic growth and activation and livability, all of the things that lead up to that. We also have expected outcomes that we're targeting, so that we can really be outcome-driven over the next five years and ensuring that we're hitting the targets. While we know, of course, that there is a great deal of flexibility needed in this market as we move into what hopefully is a more stable market where we can work with private, as well as nonprofit builders. And with that, I will open it up for any discussion and questions. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Do the Commissioners have any questions, comments?
One short, quick question. What percentage are we at right now on tenoting the Nickfish?
That's a great question. It's maybe a little bit more than half physical space. It's about two out of the four, so it's roughly half of the leasable spaces at this point. There's a daycare center, tooks, I can't remember if it's three or four, three or four different ones in combined, several of them. So they have a pretty large footprint, and what's great is that they're going to be facing Gateway Discovery Park, so there's a lot of synergy, and hopefully, you know, adding some family-friendly other things around that. The other one is the Civic Life office that's there.
Yeah. Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Great, it was a very good report, thank you very much, and an exciting plan, a lot of stuff coming together. We have one person to speak, correct? Frida Christopher, Ms. Christopher, would you like to join us?
Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. My name's Frida Christopher, I've been a property owner in Central Gateway for over 30 years, and it's a piece of commercial property that I've leased out to the same tenant for almost 10 years. I originally got involved in Gateway URA at the very beginning, and was part of a group of community members with PDC, who wrote the original Gateway Concept Plan. I also was a member of the URA for its full time that it was active. In addition, I served 32 years on the David Douglas School Board, and am currently co-chair of the East Portland Action Plan and their Housing Subcommittee. This gives me great knowledge and history in the Gateway URA and the broader Gateway area. Today, I speak to you as the co-chair of the Gateway Advisory Group, responsible for the draft five-year plan before you. I was pleased to serve on this group with other community members, representatives from businesses and nonprofits, who have worked with Joel over the last year to develop this plan. This plan was totally community-driven. This was a desire of the advisory group, that before the plan was written, that the community had full input on it. It started with a focus group of past URA members to find out what went right, but also what went wrong over the last 20 years, because there's been disheartened, the community was disheartened by the last 10 years in the URA and the lack of development. Then Joel had several focus groups, as he mentioned. Then he also was followed with that wonderful public meeting, that was well-attended, and we got a lot of input. All this information was used to develop the five-year plan. As someone who's been involved in the Gateway area for 20 years, I believe this plan reflects what was in the original concept plan. It's surprising, over 20 years, how a lot of things haven't changed, and desires are still the same. I also am pleased to see the flexibility in this plan that was last, the TIF funding flexibility that was lacking in the last five-year plan. This will allow the other portions of Gateway to receive funding when it's needed. It also will be responsive to market-driven forces as well, whereas before, the majority of the funds were spent on Halsey-Widler. But due to the funding limitations, not everyone's desires in the advisory group were met. But as a whole, the group supports this plan and its final result. I urge you to approve the five-year, the draft five-year plan, so implementation can begin. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you for your comments, and for all your volunteering on this, it's great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm considered a crazy volunteer.
She has super status.
Any comments, questions? No? Okay, thanks very much. All right, well, with that, we'll go ahead and take a vote, then. So would somebody like to make a vote, or excuse me, make a motion to approve the Gateway Action Plan?
I'd happily make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved, thank you very much, thanks for all the good work.
Also want to highlight that Greg Lucky, one of our other advisory members, is here, and happy to have him join as well, so.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming. Okay, do you have a heart?
I'll do extra 10 minutes.
Okay. Joel, Dustin, Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley has to leave at 5:00. Should we consider, are these items, well, do we have enough votes to implement these items immediately?
I'll stay extra 10 minutes.
30 days? So is that, will that work for these items? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is maybe we should do that one, and then we'll, I'm thinking maybe we should do that, and then, and then we'll go back to the green policy, and then one other item, so, okay. All right, so, we're going to do this a little bit out of the order for logistical reasons. So would someone, let's see, Brian Moore, welcome back, Brian. This is an action item number 12, adopting an updated Prosper Portland Construction and Business Workforce Equity Policy, and thank you for rejoining us.
Thank you, thank you Chair Cruz, Commissioners. This item that we're bringing forward is Proposed Updates to our Construction, Business, and Workforce Equity Policy. Next slide, please. So our requested action is the adoption of the updated policy with the following major updates. We're looking to adjust the economic thresholds to reflect construction cost increases, to better align with, and to better align with Prosper's grant programs, to introduce an alternative path approach to workforce training, to our workforce training and hiring program. And this allows a subset of some contractors and subcontractors, a path to achieve compliance that's not as cumbersome, particularly for smaller contractors and smaller contracts. We're looking to strengthen language around anti-racism and anti-harassment, as well as introducing language to deter wage theft, and to introduce community workforce agreement requirements that are consistent with the city of Portland. Next slide, please. And of course, oh, sorry, and of course, all of this aligns with our Advanced Portland Strategic Plan, particularly Outcomes 2.2, 4.1, and 4.2. Next slide. Getting here has been a listening partnership between external partners, stakeholders, and Prosper Portland staff, and that the staff team includes Deborah Lindsay, Wendy Wilcox, Director Abouaf, and myself. So going back to April 2021, this was the last update that established our Business Equity Program performance goals, our construction equity fund, and an expectation of new anti-racism, anti-harassment programs in a future update. The Community Workforce Agreement Policy was considered in December of that year, but no changes were made at that time, due to a lack of consensus around the direction that the city ought to, or sorry, that Prosper ought to move forward. Then in 2022, the City Council adopted their Regional Workforce Equity Agreement and Construction Diversity Inclusion Policy, which guides the use of community workforce agreements and similar agreements for the city's projects. And then late last year, we received a combination of requests for exemptions to aspects of this policy, we received public testimony, and we also made changes to some of our programs that all supported considering revisions to this policy. And so staff worked with a consultant to conduct interviews with industry partners, with stakeholders, aimed at identifying approaches to modify the policy that we have before you today. Next slide. Our policy update goals include increasing the pipeline of subcontractors by addressing difficulties for contractors working on Prosper and public-private projects, as well as addressing difficulties for projects that have been bid out to fulfill policy requirements, making adjustments built from best practices, adjusting triggers to better reflect construction costs and inflation, increasing workforce safety and improving job site culture, particularly for women and minority workforce, and aligning Prosper Portland Workforce Agreement requirements with the city's requirements. That, we'll jump into the proposed changes, we can actually go two slides up. So overall, the Construction, Business, and Workforce Equity Policy changes touch on our Business Equity Program with updates, our Workforce Training and Hiring Program, which has the alternative path that I mentioned, job site culture changes, really strengthening protections, and Community Workforce Agreements to align with the city, and overall, there's changes that just improve clarity of the policy language itself. Then the Business Equity Program, on the next slide. The goal of the Business Equity Program is to improve outcomes for local small businesses and support growth of construction and development firms owned by people of color and women by providing opportunities for state-of-organ certified firms. And so what we looked at in this section was really the applicability of the policy. So this is the high-level applicability. And you can see that we changed thresholds, the dollar thresholds, for triggers for compliance with the policy, in order to keep pace with other agencies and to align with our own financial investment programs. Our goals, that is, the performance requirements, all stayed the same. Next slide is our Workforce Training and Hiring Program. This section saw, I think, the most substantial overhaul, even though the highlights are fairly minimal. The goal of the Workforce Training and Hiring Program is for each recipient's work, sorry, project workforce, to reflect workforce diversity that we have here in the city of Portland, and to ensure that Prosper, that our contracting dollars provide equitable opportunities to Portland's diverse populations, particularly those that have been historically disadvantaged. The only change that you see in the policy on this slide has to do with the thresholds, and it's really only one threshold, and it has to do with the sale of property to reflect increased land values, and the fact that with the closure of many of our TIF districts, we have remnant parcels that we're disposing of that are not key properties. Next slide. So the Workforce Training and Hiring Program, the big overhaul is this, it's the alternative path and program specifications. The previous Workforce Training, sorry, Workforce Training and Hiring Program was simply structured that if you hit the threshold, you had to comply and you had to meet all the goals. And that threshold was triggered by basically a value size of the overall project at roughly $200,000, that shifted to $300,000 in some cases. And then if the project was that size, there was an additional then financial threshold on a contract-by-contract, or trade-work-by-trade-work basis. So if you met that initial threshold for the size of the project, and then you had trade work that was valued over $100,000, full compliance with the program was required, even if you were a small contractor, say a mom-and-pop shop, you know, maybe you're doing tile work or something, and it's just, you know, you and a family member or two, the requirements for reporting the hours and things like that, we heard, could be burdensome for very small operations like that. And so we created this alternative path to allow firms like that to make incremental progress towards being able to implement the full policy. Essentially, the way it's structured is, there's a list that you can see on the bottom of the slide, of bullet points that are incremental in nature, that is, they stack, so if a firm is on one project, they'll do one of them that first time, and then if they're on a project again, they would do two of them, and then that would increase over time, based on our internal tracking of who's been working on projects that are Prosper-funded, and have they been able to perform. Next slide. So another significant change, though not quite as substantial as the Workforce Training and Hiring Program, was clarification and actually providing more support and direction around our job site culture, anti-racism, and anti-harassment portion of the policy. Since the language was originally introduced, a number of programs have grown and expanded in the region that are essentially the coming together of industry partners around this, an organization called Safe From Hate, and they work with contractors and with training programs to help promote anti-racist and anti-harassment culture change onsite. to help promote anti-racist and anti-harassment culture change onsite for jobs. And so we have integrated recommended language that they've provided. And we've identified a couple of programs that they often work with, including Green Dot for the Trades and Rise Up Oregon as programs that are potentially off-the-shelf or nearly off-the-shelf programs that contractors and both primes and subs can access in order to provide either in-person or highly interactive anti-racism, anti-harassment training. Next slide. This section, our anti-wage theft language, is an entirely new section. And this requires that project owners, and it may flow down to their contractors or subcontractors, but it requires that the project owners review the bully reports at the time that they bid out their project so that they can identify potential contractors that have bully complaints against them so that they can be knowledgeable about who it is they're hiring and what risks they might be facing on the job site. This requirement includes that they, when they run those reports, they submit them to us as well so that we can also start doing the data tracking to get a better understanding of the extent to which these bully complaints happen. It does, however, clarify that the enforcement is still, Bully is still in the lead for enforcement and that we don't have an enforcement role, but we are tracking and staying knowledgeable about where there may be potential either bad actors or folks who have struggled and may need some technical support in order to do a better job. In our community workforce agreements, this section is also new and aligns with the city of Portland's new policy. So this provides for entering into community workforce agreements on prosper-owned projects that are valued at over $5 million, which is in alignment with the city's policy, and as well as any project that's procured using alternative contracting methods. So that's an opportunity for us to establish community workforce agreements on our projects. So let's talk about next steps. So let's see. So here we are in June and July. We're looking to launch and market new loan products together with our new construction business workforce equity and, incidentally, green building policies. In the other sequence of activities, the green building policy would have already gone forward, or you would have heard from that already. And then summer and fall this year, we're looking to develop construction equity fund investment guidelines that will support the putting in place technical assistance to help contractors meet our workforce equity policies, our business equity policies, and any other gaps that we're seeing rise between other programs we have, like our COEP program. And then looking in the fall to begin implementing those construction equity fund guidelines once they're established. That's all I have on this item, and I would love to answer any questions you may have.
A lot of exciting changes, and it's a great presentation. Thank you, Des. The commissioners have any comments? Yeah, I think Serena needs to go first.
I have to go. I do have questions. So like, on the whole wage thing about, I know Bully's the point, but there is no other repercussions that we can do if they're not paying folks the way they should be. I guess that's my only thing. I just felt like, yes, Bully has the last say, but if folks are not getting paid or we have those bad actors, there's really nothing that we can do. I just...
I'll ask a follow-up to help clarify this because I'm on the same track here. Is there a higher level of oversight that we would implement than on a contractor that has reported bully violations? So we can make sure that if we need to put a lien on a bond to make sure that the workers that they've hired get paid, that can happen?
I didn't say that right.
I mean, that's the way Bully usually will enforce that, but...
Yeah, we felt like this was a really important first step in terms of transparency and just understanding and unpacking and kind of who's working on projects that we're providing funding or where our policy applies. One of the things we've, on our projects, our compliance staff person is onsite, kind of working with staff. So I think it's something that we could certainly commit to that if there is kind of a flag that goes up for us, I think our legal counsel would tell us that we can't tell kind of a public-private entity how they contract with another private entity, but we could increase onsite oversight to ensure that folks are being paid.
I think that extra level of protection is what I think we were trying to go for there without putting the policy that would be in conflict legal, so.
Okay.
I do, but I gotta go.
Okay, okay. So actually, could you stay just for just a couple of minutes? Just for a public testimony, and then we'll vote. Then we can implement this now.
A couple more.
What?
I have a few more that I have questions.
Or comments? Oh, sorry.
Questions.
Okay, okay. All right, we may have to defer implementation then.
Which just means that if we only have three votes in favor, it'll take effect in 30 days, which will be July 17.
That's what I mean. Which is before the fall time that we're implementing the fund, so.
If we close on any loans or any deals in the next 30 days, our current policy would apply relative to our future policy. I think that's the...
Okay.
If I understood it correctly.
All right, that's what we'll have to do. Okay.
Thank you.
So the CEF fund that we're creating, is it in, is it in any way aligned with the COEP, CDF, the other regional funds that have been created for this similar purpose?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are in the process of really trying to true up the regional funds as well as our COEP programs to ensure that we're not just doing the same programs, but really trying to identify where there's gaps, where either certain contractors aren't getting their needs met in terms of having access to resources to be able to meet our policy requirements and other things like that. And so we're in the process of doing that analysis right now.
So the reason why I asked the question, at least, please jump in here. The one thing I'd see missing from ours that's in every single other one is when you put that burden on workforce development partners, that there's also funding going to them. And I didn't see that in here. The only thing I heard in here was that it was going to contractor education or contractor assistance or technical assistance for contractors. I don't see where we're helping making sure that the burden we're putting on Oregon Tradeswomen and Constructing Hope and Portland Youth Build, that we're funding that.
Yeah, I actually think that's the part of the feedback we got. It was great. Part of the feedback we got from the various folks who were interviewed in trying to put this policy together was that feedback. And so the way we'll look at it is both, what is the annual resources that we're sending to workforce training partners who are actually training up the workforce? And then what are the resources that we're putting to small businesses and subcontractors who are working on our projects who either need small business technical assistance and support or like workforce training support, i.e., onsite kind of reporting or onsite some of the Safe From Hate if they need kind of assistance? And/or some of the subcontractors who might be eligible for that alternative path and making sure that they feel kind of that there's financial resources that they can tap into if they're needed. But absolutely, I think it needs to go to both workforce training partners as well as directly to some of the smaller businesses working on our projects.
And then, I can't even rebound writing. So the alternative path, I like the way that we're thinking about this. I don't know that it completely captures, and it's going to be very difficult to track, capturing what we're trying to do in the creation of that incubator space. But we need to track it and we need to report it. So, and that's one thing that, that way, we can identify that there's triggers in place and that folks aren't reusing the same, which you touched on great. I think that having them step up one more, not necessarily the same one they used the last time, but two more, I think that gets us there, that shows that growth that we're trying to accomplish to get contractors to get to that next level.
Yeah, that's great input. And I think we could probably, we can look at the specifications and adding kind of a data tracking element to offering those options. I think we also heard some feedback of wanting to make sure that the goalposts that we set of the 100,000 to 200,000 and the 300 to 500 hours is reflective of what's supportive for subcontractors who are working on these, on the projects where our policy applies. And so we can track that too, to see, are we hitting the mark? Do we need to increase that range? Do we need to decrease that range over time?
Which leads to my last question. I promise this is my last one, which we all recognize, this is a living document. This is a living policy that has to adjust as we adjust. And when's the next check-in time for that? I mean, when are we going to come back and shore things up that we're missing?
So with the timing of the implementation of this policy and the pacing of projects that would come through the pipeline and have to comply, we've had a chance to think about it, and it makes the most sense to come back within six months to a year. Because if you think, you know, even if a project came through immediately after this policy was applicable, it's a development project, so it's going to be, you know, six months to nine months to get under construction where this portion of the policy is actually being implemented. So I really think the earliest we could come in is six months, and we would definitely have more information at 12.
I mean, I just want to make sure that we keep that momentum going that as we're shoring this up and making sure that it works for everybody, that we don't lose sight of the fact that we got to come back sometimes and adjust, unlike what we did in South Waterfront.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I'm confident that our partners will encourage us to come back and adjust if there's something wrong with the policy.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. Now, before we vote, we actually have two items of public testimony, two folks here, Tino Juarez and Jesus Ikada. Would you gentlemen like to join us for a few minutes?
I am sorry.
Part of your three minutes.
My bad.
You made everybody laugh. It should be.
Can I go now?
Please.
Boom.
Each have three minutes.
Greetings, Board. My name's Tino, and I'm a carpenter by trade, and I've been in the construction industry for about 14, going on 15 years now. And it's in my experience that I've learned that a lot of times that the people in the office, a lot of times don't see at ground level of what the workers see and what's going on. And I want to hopefully take this board and this group down to my peripheral view. I have witnessed in the last few years, working especially here in the Portland area, where developers are incentivized by tax exemption breaks. They're given property sales at a way-low value a normal person would never, ever get in their lifetime. And so these workers, these developers are incentivized, and they hire general contractors, subcontractors that use labor brokers that then bring it to a third or fourth tier contracting. And that is a lot of times where the bad stuff begins to happen. We bring these things up to management, and they simply use words like, "This is not the place. It's not prevailing wage. It doesn't meet the threshold." Or, "This project is not big enough." Simply passing the buck and shifting blame. And if, what's real interesting, though, as I'm having these conversations with these developed, these general contractors and these companies, every single one of them has their type of work equity policy on how they're equitable and they are partners with the community. But I want to tell you, man, it's nothing more than hypocrisy. You see it on paper, but you see nothing that takes place on action. These, and the working class is tired of it. I do commend this group of individuals for bringing this up and having this discussion, this much-needed discussion. But can I tell you, as I went through this policy and I looked through and I read through it, I see nothing in there that holds contractors and illicit contractors responsible and accountable. I saw Bully as the leading force of enforcement. Can I tell you, man, Bully is understaffed. Have you tried calling OSHA or Bully for a problem before? And by the time that happens, the worker, the damage is already done. Where is the language in this policy that actually holds contractors responsible? Where is the wording that says, man, if they do this, this, and thus, and thus? Tracking, are you serious? I can name projects where tracking is supposed to be being reported, but wage theft is happening, and they use these words like equity, diversity, and inclusion. It is nothing more than a mirage. And the people at the bottom are the ones getting the grunt of the deal. My question for this group of leaders is that, as we hear, are we just putting another, are we printing out a nice document for a mirage? Is it just giving out the image? What's actually in place that's there to protect the working class and people like me?
It's a hard act to follow. No, I mean, it's true. Jesus, I'll say that. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to be here. And I mean, it's true what Tino's saying. I mean, we live it every day. We're boots on the ground on those job sites. Workers are reaching out to us. They're victims of wage theft, their extortion, having to pay 12% to go to work of your paycheck. It's ridiculous. We're all about working together with all of you. We want to make this happen. We just got to make sure there's no gaps in there, no gaps for them to weasel their way in and, oh, you know what? We have another victim. We don't need that. There's so much of it here in Portland. And Tino says, I mean, the bird's eye view is nothing compared to being on those job sites. There's a reason why me and Tino, when we show up on a job site, there's a reason they don't want us there because they know we're going to find out what's really going on. We have the proof. Workers have come to us and talked to us, told us, hey, help us. Workers of this community here in Portland. So I feel that we need to strengthen, even though it is, it is nice. I like it. But we need to strengthen that language. And it just, it just so happens that today, we brought some language with us that we have implemented in other cities, and it's working. It's working. There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be, oh, if it's above this amount of money, then this is when it kicks in. It should be for all workers. All workers should have that same protection. It shouldn't be like, oh, hopefully I get to that $300,000 or $500,000 job so that way I can have this protection. Why are we doing that? If we can right now, we could fix that right now. And you know what? As soon as a shovel hits that dirt, there's protections put in place for those people, for the people who are building our communities right now. We could do that. We're willing to collaborate, work with all of you to make it happen. If you need to see the proof, we have it. I don't know how many Bully claims we have already where we assisted workers. They're short-staffed. They do what they can with what they have, and they have our full support. But we need all of you to come together with us, collaborate, and start implementing languages that are really going to take effect since day one. And if you all allow me, I'd love to share it with you. I brought a copy for each one of you.
Great.
All righty, that's what I got. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming, both. We really appreciate your comments and your input, and I'm hoping staff will stay in touch with you. And this language will be helpful, too. So this is great.
Yeah, and if there's any kind of questions or concerns, if you want to set up a meeting, I mean, they have our contacts on the cards. We'll be more than...
more ground at the City of Portland. We're trying to align with a lot of the City of Portland policies, and if this was adopted by the City of Portland, I believe that we would end up adopting that as well. So I think that is a good place to, to probably schedule some meetings, if you haven't, I know you guys have, already scheduled with, you know, Commissioner Rubio, Commissioner Ryan, you know, that, that are going to be around. So, I just said it that way, but, but, but talk to them, and the rest of the commissioners. But talk to them, and make sure you get this in front of them as well, and let's see if we can't get something started there on that conversation.
We, we, we've been going to, to all City Hall meetings, trying to get people at least to look at it, look it over, and, you know, give us your thoughts. But the more we put this out there, the more everybody's gonna know about it. But thank you, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Alrighty.
For coming. So, to the remaining commissioners, if you have any more, any other comments or questions, anything else you'd like to ask? Okay. All right then, well, let's, let's vote on the policy as it is, and then we'll look to do some more work on this going forward, too. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the updated Prosper Portland Construction Business Workforce Equity Policy?
Being very equitable in the motions, yes, motion to approve.
You second?
I will second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously. Thanks very much. Thanks for the great presentation, and thanks to everybody for all your hard work on this, too, because I know it's a heavy lift, it's been a lot of work. So, but we'll continue to refine this, we aren't losing track of these issues, so, thank you.
Thank you Chair Cruz, thank you commissioners, and a big thank you to Commissioner Myers.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have one more action item, and that's adopting an amended and restated Prosper Portland Green Building Policy. Wendy Wilcox will join. Thank you Wendy.
Now it is. Good afternoon, and thank you, by the way, for staying late, it's running late, but thank you Chair Cruz and commissioners, and Director Vickers. I'm very pleased to be here today with this item, and Justin, when you're ready. Oh, and for those of you that don't know me, I am a, I work in the Development and Investment Department, I am a construction and compliance project manager there. Okay, and so today, we are requesting that the board adopt an amended and restated Prosper Portland Green Building Policy. And I want to state today that this is the first time this policy has been looked at since 2015, so I'm super glad we're here. So, the proposed updates are increasing the economic threshold for supported projects and land sales, we'd like to extend to all building types, increase program options for certification, take a tiered approach to policy requirements based on building square footage, adopt sustainability targets for smaller projects, and allow for meaningful alternative options for projects seeking support in later stages of design and development. Next slide, please. Okay, and this action aligns with, with Advance Portland and the Climate Action Plan, it's Outcome 1.2, applying an inclusive economic growth grounding to climate policy. And I just want to say, there's the Climate Action Plan, and I've been told there's now the Climate Emergency Workforce Plan of 2022 and to 2025, just want to reference both of those. Next slide, please. So for context, this, these came about partially because I heard from the board that exemptions, there was starting to be just a line of exemptions coming, and I had already started working with people on the TI, because the Green TI Guide that we were using for those smaller projects is now sort of defunct. So that was one thing. And then all of a sudden, we're getting new loan products, and those, with those new loan products, we'll be seeing a larger array of building types and, and project types. And so there was a need to, to adjust for that. We wanted to make sure that we were increasing our alignment with the city's emergency action plan, with a big focus on lowering carbon emissions. And the industry overall, I hear, we've heard that they're looking for more diversity and certification pathways. And like I said before, that we need to replace the Green TI Guide. So, staff work with Brightwork Sustainability to evaluate requirement levels and certification, and to design a set of sustainability targets that we could use as benchmarks with smaller projects. And after we came up with those, we engaged with subject matter experts from developers, architects, contractors, and additional sustainability professionals to, to see what they thought and, and get feedback. And also, we took time with our bureau partners at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, specifically policy writers, and at the Portland Housing Bureau as well, and had great conversations with them and felt support for our, for these efforts. Next slide, please, Justin. So here we are, this is the current green building policy snapshot. So the applicability is any project receiving Prosper Portland's financial assistance for greater than or equal to 200,000, any real property disposition, Prosper-owned and leased real property at the time of lease agreement or planned improvement. And so these requirements start with new construction and major renovations of commercial and mixed-use buildings of equal to 50,000 square feet or 30 units or more, the requirement is lead gold. And it's also lead, lead gold or earth-advantaged gold for less than 50,000 square feet or 30 units of new construction and major renovations. And the interesting thing here is that earth-advantaged gold, commercial is no longer available as a pathway, and this is very, very narrow. So then we have our tenant improvements, greater than 5,000 square feet, they could, they needed to achieve lead silver, and anything under 5,000 square feet would be a Green TI. We also, interestingly enough, in 2015, decided that we would have green building for new or renovated standalone parking structures, and park, which was ParkSmart Gold or ParkSmart Pioneer. I do want to say that due to our efforts, we have the first ParkSmart Gold parking garage at OCC Parking Garage, the first one, I think, in this city and one of very few. But on to the new, the new policy, we're not continuing, I, I, we are probably not continuing with parking garages, I think it's safe to say. Next slide, please. Okay, so the new policy is new, it's, it's also new construction of buildings, major renovations, and tenant improvements. If such projects receive financial assistance of more than 500,000, and this is to reflect the increase in construction costs and just overall project costs, and if it occurs on real property owned or leased by Prosper Portland at any dollar amount, occurs on a parcel of real property that was conveyed by Prosper Portland to a non-governmental buyer for a price greater than 500,000. And here are the requirements. So we again are at that 50,000 square feet level, it's in line with the Central City Plan of the city. And what they had to do is they have to achieve a gold-level certification or equivalent, and here you can see that we have a much larger array of certifications. These are in line with the city's Central City Plan, and they actually asked to make the addition, and I was in strong agreement of Energy Trust path in at zero. They haven't been able to add that themselves. It's very focused on lowering emissions, and it also comes with incentives. The next, our mid-level, is buildings greater than or equal to 20,000 square feet but less than 50,000 square feet. They must achieve certifications at the silver level or equivalent. And here we have the list. So, and if any of you don't know what NGBS is, it's the National Green Building Standard, and it's specifically for housing. And then on the 20,000 square feet, we have Prosper Portland's new sustainability benchmarks, and those are benchmarks that have benchmarks for energy, water, healthy materials, and waste. And they can be specifically tailored to the tenant improvement, to the new construction, and there's actually even energy leadership options, so if we get new construction, we can require that they go at a very, a little higher level. And next steps with that are building out the spec book. That's what I've got. Are there any questions?
Comments?
A question, so, did we coordinate with Planning and Sustainability to make sure this was on what they're looking for as well?
Yeah, I spoke with Vin at, at the city for a long time, I spoke to him a couple times, and, yeah, he was fine. They are not updating their green building policy right now. So I, I checked in with that very extensively to, because if they were, we needed to, so, and there's also something in the new policy that says that we have the ability to update if code changes, and, and just to keep in line with the city.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's great to get this all tidied up. Thanks very much for the presentation, really appreciate it. Somebody like to make a motion to?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
As I electrocute myself. Second.
All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes, thank you very much. Okay, so now we get down to the most important item of the day, and that is an item to recognize our good friend and colleague Willie Myers, who is going to be leaving us. You know, we started together on the board nine years ago, it's been a long time, but it's been a lot of fun, and part of the reason it's been so much fun is just having you here, and I'm really gonna miss you, gonna miss your, your wise input and counsel, especially on everything related to workforce issues and other matters as well, and just your sense of humor and good-natured sensibility, and the way that you've approached all of this work as kind of a labor of love all these years. Much appreciated, my friend, and I'm, I'm gonna miss you, and I'm, I hope that we will stay in touch. So, would anybody else like to?
Our time was very brief, but it was memorable, so thank you so much for warming me up into everything that is being on, on the commission here, so thank you.
Then did Angela, is she still here? Would you? Yes, oh, there you are, hiding over there.
Yes, I echo everything they said, and we just want to thank you so much from the bottom of our heart, on behalf of the city, for your years of service, and, you know, this will be a very big loss, and we're gonna miss you so much, but I know that you have left a big legacy for the city. So thank you so much for all your contributions, and that's on behalf of Team Rubio, so, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Angela.
Well, it's been an honor and a privilege to, to work with everyone here at Prosper Portland, and get to know all of you, and watch the growth that's happened here into an organization that we all envisioned it could be. And, yeah, I'm gonna miss all of you, I'm gonna miss you, I miss working with you on this. Y'all have my phone number when you have questions. One thing I will close here with is that, I'm, you know, my replacement coming in here, Felisa Haggins, there is no better advocate for working people than Felisa, and there's no better person that the, the City Council could, could have selected to replace me here, on someone who has the level of understanding of what we need to accomplish here. So, I think the future is bright, I hope you all take the time and get to know her, because she's an amazing person, so, thank you.
So I have, I have a, I have a resolution to read, it's kind of a proclamation about Willie, so I'm gonna read this. It's all, it's all great. So, okay. Resolution of commendation and appreciation of Willie Myers for distinguished service and outstanding dedication to Prosper Portland and the City of Portland. Whereas Willie Myers was appointed as a member of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners by Mayor Charlie Hales and confirmed by the Portland City Council on July 1, 2015. Boy, that seems like a long time ago. Whereas Willie Myers was reappointed as a member of the Prosper Portland Board by Mayor Ted Wheeler and confirmed by the Portland City Council on July 10, 2018, he was reappointed again for another three-year term by Mayor Ted Wheeler and confirmed by the Portland City Council on June 16, 2021. Whereas Willie Myers has generally, excuse me, generously shared his professional skills as, as a labor leader with the Columbia Pacific Building Trades Council to guide Prosper Portland in its construction and workforce equity practices. Whereas Willie Myers has contributed his decades of expertise, industry connections, and knowledge related to the construction trades, to provide invaluable perspective and insight on an array of projects throughout the city, including on significant multi-phase projects such as South Waterfront and Broadway Quarter. Whereas Willie Myers has provided leadership in the agency's name, name change and evolution, stressing the importance of building trust and living into the vision of Prosper Portland for inclusive economic growth. Whereas Willie Myers has offered guidance and expertise critical to the 2017, 2019, 2021, and 2024 updates to Prosper Portland's construction business and workforce equity policy and procedures, which led to meaningful opportunities for local businesses and a diverse workforce. Whereas Willie Myers has served with honor and distinction as a visionary and advisor of the Broadway Quarter, supporting robust public engagement, ensuring community benefits, and a thoughtful approach to balancing multiple needs on an urban development project rooted in putting people first, which has, has and will continue to dramatically change Portland's downtown landscape. Whereas Willie Myers served as a task force member on the Portland Economic Relief and Stabilization Strategy, advising on collaborative economic relief and stabilization interventions during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas Willie Myers served as a Leadership Roundtable Member, the accolades go on. A Leadership Roundtable Member, helping inform Advance Portland, a five-year City of Portland call to action for inclusive economic growth. Whereas Willie Myers volunteered significant time away from his family and work responsibilities to ensure Prosper Portland's mission and vision for the city is achieved. Whereas Willie Myers has diligently and forthrightly carried out his civic duties on behalf of Prosper Portland, ensuring the projects, initiatives, and policies put forth by the agency are in the best interest of the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Prosper Portland individually and collectively commends Willie Myers for his service to Prosper Portland and to the constituency of the City of Portland that Prosper Portland represents, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. So we need to vote to adopt Resolution Number 7539, recognizing our friend and colleague Willie Myers.
Motion, motion to.
Motion to approve, and a second.
I will second it.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you Willie, we're really gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have this present.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Chair Cruz, for that resolution, and Commissioner Myers, on behalf
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Willie. We're really going to miss you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Chair Cruz, for that resolution. And Commissioner Myers, on behalf of Executive Director Branham and the Prosper staff team and board, this small token of our appreciation is meant to share just a small amount of our gratitude for the wisdom, guidance, and thought leadership you've offered the agency, but more important, Portlanders, over your long, long, long tenure. Cheers to your retirement, and all that comes next. We appreciate you, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, my friend.
All right, and with that, the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
That's a lot of meaning. Gotcha.